I am going to a funeral.
My, my skin tans pretty easily, so.
All right. All right, we'll start with the flag, Sleet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everybody, to the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners, our CIP review, and I wanted to announce too, we're going to end at 10:15. I have a place that I have to be, so we'll end at that point. Jennifer?
Yes.
It's all yours.
Oh, great. So Jennifer Sauer, Audit Finance. I am here this morning to discuss the 2024 through 2028 capital improvement plan. These are various projects that have been submitted by all of our departments with a request to be funded between the years 2024 and 2028. Our goal today, I guess, is to come up with a plan for the commission to be presented at an upcoming commission meeting for, to actually be voted and passed at that time. So as a starting point, I just put a summary of all of the requests made through all of the sources during that five-year time. They total $122,587,470. Specifically, 2024, which is the budget year we're getting ready to, to look at and adopt, is a request of $21,102,974. So from that starting point, we will kind of take this like we have in the past, where we look at some of the specialty-funded items that different departments have, and then work our way down to the capital outlay budget itself. So the first area we have to look at, whoops, sorry. Let me get the whole screen. This is the solid waste fund. So solid waste has requests of all four years of a little over $5 million. But for 2024 itself, they are requesting $1,355,000 to be used towards various pieces of solid waste equipment. So I'm not sure if you guys wanted to discuss solid waste at all, or if you, what you wanted to do at this point.
During the budget discussion, I believe that this was all listed as a one priority for solid waste as part of their annual equipment renewal.
That is correct. And he has this, I believe, on a five-year plan based on, yes, hi, sir. Five-year plan based on when they would no longer be prime pieces of equipment, I'm guessing.
But I think that he also discussed that he did not receive several pieces of equipment that he had placed on prior years CIP due to supply chain and still waiting on that equipment to come in.
Yes, that is true. I know, we are still waiting on several pieces of equipment that were ordered in '22 and I, in '23.
What, what's the life expectancy of these front side loaders and rear loaders? What do you expect to get out of them?
Moyn Commission, Bill, so in Shawnee County Solid Waste. Typically, obviously, the vehicle does not expire at the end of five years, but that five-year is our warranty period as far as both powertrain and our emissions warranty. So we, we try to hold it within that five-year period because outside of warranty period, if there's emissions failure or a powertrain failure, it can get pricey very quick. We stay up to date on our maintenance pretty well, so, and that's why we get such a high trade-in value on this equipment because people know we take care of our stuff. But once you get outside that warranty, then you're kind of in that gray area. And we've had some failures that exceed, that repairs exceed up to $25,000, so.
Yes.
This is a question back to Jennifer. Given that the solid waste is an enterprise fund, any CIP would not come from the capital outlay fund that we have within the budget, correct?
That is correct. Everything that is on this screen would come from the solid waste fund, and we are not allowed to purchase any solid waste equipment out of the capital outlay fund.
Correct. So again, I just, where we had contemplated or had a discussion of a capital outlay of $2.5 million, this would not be part of that $2.5 million if that was what was approved?
That's true, yes.
Good. Yes.
Bill, do you have any of the side loaders that are backordered right now of the ones that you've not received?
I think, I can't remember how many side loaders I am, that's back over there. Mostly what we're waiting on right now is rear load trucks, and the side loaders will be next year's purchase.
I just noticed that in '24, it's a pretty sizable amount for the side loaders. Are we just ordering more of those, or are they more expensive, or?
They are more expensive, but just, these four right here are, this is their year that we order those four, part of that five. So as we go through, you know, this year I might order rear load trucks, next year I might order majority side loaders, and then a couple of years from now, I'll order front loads. So it just kind of goes and waits.
I, it's the reason I'm asking, I think, is because, you know, in '27, there's no side loaders at all.
Right.
And it, I mean, it's.
And side loaders do take a lot of wear and tear, just the way, because obviously the side loader, that little arm out there, takes a lot of abuse, so it is a high-wear item.
Okay. I just.
Yeah.
Was wondering if maybe we need to spread them out just a little bit more and make it, so we're not getting this kind of balloon in one year and then.
Correct.
And then nothing in another.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bill. Okay.
So moving on, our next department that has some funding available to them, the Public Works Department, has several sources that they can use for some of their capital outlay item, or cap, capital improvement items, and that is the special highway, special bridge, and special machinery funds. They have an infrastructure fund, and then they also have a, some of the county sales tax that is specifically set aside for their department. They have several items, they always list them out here for us for five years. For the next five years, their requests total a little over $54 million, but for 2024, out of their special highway bridges and machinery funds, it's $5.8 million, with nothing out of their infrastructure fund, and $3.1 million out of their county sales tax. So again, this has not come out of the capital outlay, but this is a capital improvement projects that are from these various sources.
Is there nothing for the infrastructure for 2024?
No, there was nothing lined out for, from the infrastructure for 2024.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
The infrastructure fund has nothing lined out for, for 2024.
Okay.
Oh, that's true. There are a couple of items, items on here that are in the special highway, bridge, and machinery funds that are split funded with the capital outlay fund. I'm gonna flip over here real quick just to see which, those are these three items. There is, it's part of their dump truck refresh, the backhoe refresh, and the mower tractor side mount. So they're using, they're requesting to use both capital outlay funding and special machinery funding to finish the cost of those items. So like, here is the $50,000 for the mower side deck, the backhoe refresh of $80,000, and the dump truck refresh is right here at $75,000 out of their own special funding.
Is this a special highway bridge? This is, this is not part of that million dollars that the state gave us for that project?
Courtney, House Director of Public Works. That's correct. The million dollars is separate from anything up here.
Okay.
Jennifer, specifically for Public Works, there are three items listed on capital outlay, and those, again, total up to $300,000?
Correct. Sorry, that's the one that is harder, hardest to see. Yes, they usually, Public Works requests approximately $300,000 every year out of the capital outlay fund. grouping?
I don't have anything.
No, good.
I don't, I don't think I have any questions, so I think I'm good.
Very good.
All right.
So the next screen I have changed just a little bit from last year. We now have more than one department who has equipment funds. So we're just kind of using one screen to summarize all of our different departmental equipment funds. This year, we had requests from the Noxious Weed Department to use their equipment fund in '25 and '27, and then we had a request from the DOC to use their safety equipment fund in 2024 to purchase juvenile cell furniture and the DOC officer workstation replacements.
This juvenile cell furniture replacement is, how old, how old's the existing furniture and what's its condition?
Brian Cole, Shawnee County Department of Corrections. It will be furniture, not so much dedicated to the cells, it'll be out into the general daycare, dayroom areas, and some cell stuff. This is the original information, or some of the original furniture that's been almost 20 years old, that with the accreditation and the Kansas Department of Children and Families that come in, we have to stay up not only on the furniture, but even the flooring. If they see a crack in the flooring, they'll ask that we get it replaced. We're getting to the point to where some of the furniture is being repaired, about to the point that it can be. And that's why we thought with this safety building fund that we have, it would be outside of the CIP, and we thought this would be a, an excellent funding source for that.
Brian, on your, on your request, it says that it's a two-year project to replace the furniture.
We were gonna, if it was gonna be CIP, we were gonna try to do it in two, or two years. But being as we have a fund outside of the CIP, we wanted to get it all done next year.
Okay.
So what didn't come from that. That, so I just put it all together.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. And that would be the same with the, off, the, the workstations as well at the adult detention center. Those are the original ones when the new addition was built, and those have suffered extremely wear and tear.
I have a question for Noxious Weed. On the aerial drone applicator, we, again, this is 2025, during the budget presentation, we talked about how we're currently renting that equipment. What would be, what's our rental cost for a season?
Well, so, right now, whatever they charge us, we pass on to the entity that we're spraying for, and it varies between, I think, the ponds that they're doing for Kurt's $2,500 each time they spray it, so it just varies. So it's no cost actually us, we just, they bill us what that amount is, and we pass on to, say, the city of Topeka, or, or Public Works for the ponds, or.
And if we own the applicator, would we be passing off the costs of our equipment to them, and would that be a billable amount?
It would be a billable amount, yes. Yeah.
So then you would expect to recoup the cost of the equipment over a period of time?
About three to five years, I think, is what, what we would do. I think when, we would figure out what the cost is, and then we break out what the per-acre charge is, kind of what we do with labor rate now for KDOT and all that, we come up with a, with a rate for manpower and equipment, and then chemicals all priced at, at non-cost share price, and so.
So if either way we go, we wind up at a net zero cost, what, what's the benefit out of us owning the equipment over just leasing it as we need it?
I think the benefit, right now, the tough part is, is weather-dependent, and so we're trying to schedule these things out a couple of weeks with, especially with RISE UAV out of Colorado, and, you know, you get up to the week of, and then the weather throws you off, and now it's a scheduling nightmare for when they can come back. And so, right now, we've pushed about three locations for the city of Topeka. We've been trying to get into since about May, and we're now July, and, and so we just haven't been able to, it seems like every, every week that it's time to go, then, then the wind is either blowing 30 miles an hour, or, or it's raining, so.
So it becomes a convenience factor in scheduling and in making sure that the application is done?
It is, it's, it's more of a scheduling, you know, convenience deal for us, is, you know, tomorrow, if the weather's great, we could just load up and go versus waiting on somebody from Colorado to come.
But at the same time, if the machine was to malfunction, break, that cost is not our cost, it's their cost.
Correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I could see as these become more popular, the availability of these machines is probably gonna narrow.
I, I think so, and, and, and right now, we only use it on the absolute areas that we just can't get to. I mean, I have a list of stuff that, you know, if, if, if I'm keeping applicator safety in mind, Shunga Creek, the hills over there, you know, if we could keep a piece of equipment off of there, there's no one around, I mean, we would use that thing on those. Is it something that we would pay for right now to, to have it contract sprayed? Probably not, just because we can still do it, and, and that affects our billables too, so, but again, if we're, if, if we had it and we're billing it out, I think we would, we would love to use it on those areas and not, and not run the risk of being down there.
All right. Any other questions? Okay.
Did you have any other questions on this?
No, we can move on.
Very good. The next tab is another one that we've kind of tweaked a little this year. Parks and Rec has a couple different funding sources, so we're, we just decided to combine them all onto one screen now. They have made one request out of their 2024, for their, out of their Parks and Rec revolving fund, for the recreation building at Lake Shawnee. And then they also, this, new to them this year is the Gage Park sales tax. And they have one item that is slated out of 2024, which is the Gage Park playground renovation, and then they have a couple other items in out-years also slated to go against the Gage Park sales tax.
The Gage Park playground renovation, is that, is that that Playland area, or is it various areas?
Tim, or at Parks and Recreation Department, yes, that, that's, that's the area that we're discussing.
That area just gets hammered.
It does. Can't, can't grow grass there, it's just, so we want to do a complete renovation of that, that area. Lot of safety surfacing and some turf, artificial turf, so.
If there's a chance to use some of the, the grants from KDHE for the rubber surfacing.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Been able to stretch the budget before with that grant on.
Agreed.
Yes.
Tim, on the recreation building at Lake Shawnee, is that the cost of a new building?
No, we, we just plan to renovate the existing building.
And how big is that building?
I don't have square footage of it. It's, it's, it's small. It's, I don't know if you've seen it lately, it's, it's, it's in desperate, I think, need for a refresh, so we would be extending it out towards the road and, and really just renovating it for the most part.
$375,000 seems like a lot for the size of building.
We're at, yeah, we are.
From what my memory is telling me, it seems like a pretty small building.
Yeah, we are adding a section in the front, yeah.
Okay.
That's where we hold our, our summer camp program at Lake Shawnee, so, and then it's also reservable, but we don't do a lot of reservations because it's not in great shape.
Right.
Gage Park sales tax, is there a, is there a, something in the works to do a master plan for that?
There, there is. Originally, we were hoping maybe to have that on for this Thursday, but I think it might be the following week where we will come up to the BCC and ask for permission to enter into an MOU with the Gage Park Improvement Authority, and then move forward with an RFP to do a master plan for Gage Park.
So is that considered the '23, '23 project, then?
I didn't include that in this, in the CIP or part of this, this request, and mainly because the Gage Park Improvement Authority has discretionary funds, and they're going to match what we put into the project. And we had set aside funds previously for the master plan for Gage Park, which are still in our building maintenance fund, and we were planning on utilizing that money.
So that's rough. Basically, that's a '23 project.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay. Snyder's Cabin. Boy, that, I'm glad to see that you're gonna scrape that, start over there.
That would be the goal.
Good.
And I think that, that is, we, we moved that back a little, mainly because I think once we do the master plan, you know, priorities may change, but yes, we would, we're planning on getting rid of it.
That, that building wasn't even, I mean, that was an open-air shelter at the time.
Right.
It wasn't designed to be enclosed and everything was, yeah, that'd be good. Although Gage Park was the original Snyder's Cabin, I don't know what happened there, but the name got flipped over to that other.
Downsized.
And the Rhineish Rose Garden, that's putting in permanent walks, kind of thing?
Yeah, permanent walks is part of that, some curbing around the beds, if, if we can do that, and then also renovating that pergola area, and, and as you know, we've got the two separate pergolas, and then we'd like to connect those with a structure that arched over the top, which I think may have been how it was originally.
It was in the original plan. I don't know if it was originally built.
Okay.
I don't know, but.
Yeah.
I have, the plans are still in the drawers.
Right. So the thought was then that you're creating a covered area between those two pergolas where you can have weddings and other events at the, at the rose garden.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
So, Tim, if I'm not mistaken, you, you mentioned the master plan, and I believe the request was $200,000 for that.
That's for the department master plan, correct, not the Gage Park master plan.
Okay. And then you said we had already budgeted money for Gage Park master plan?
We had set aside money, this actually was, I believe in 2018, that was maybe the year before I got here, that we had set aside, I believe it was around $90,000 for a master plan, and we still have that money earmarked in our, our maintenance fund, our building maintenance fund. We've held on to that money.
Okay.
All this time.
Well, that's good. When you said we're doing a 50-50 match with the Improvement, Improvement Authority.
Correct.
Assuming that they approve it, that is.
Right.
So that'll free up $45,000 approximately, then?
Well, I don't know. I don't know what that master plan will, if, I mean, that was several years ago, and I think even at that time, we were not the only organization putting money into the plan. The, I think that the, possibly the zoo, or the city of Topeka at the time, was putting some funding in, the Parks for All Foundation was putting some funding in, and then our department. I think maybe just a drop, yeah. They were trying, yes.
Well, I, I just, it doesn't make sense for me how a master plan for Gage Park costs the same as a master plan for all of our parks combined.
Yeah, that's a valid, that's a valid point, yeah.
I mean, it, $200,000, in my mind, seems like a lot when really, they've got a pretty good basis to work from with the previous master plan.
I would ant, I agree with what, the point that you're making, and I think it could be lower because my understanding also from the first one was that there was, like, for instance, a zoo consultant that was included in that, that added to the cost. There were some other things. Now, since that time, the zoo has created their own master plan, the Discovery Center is, is moving in that direction, they haven't done one yet, but they're, they're wanting to. So I think you could see that price go down quite a bit.
Commissioner Mays?
Yeah.
My concern is, though, there are some designs for the zoo expansion that contemplate taking out everything along that eastern edge, all the way from one in north to south, which means that the horseshoe pits would be relocated or need to be relocated, and those date back to, I believe, 1910, 1912 to Gage Park. You look at the Bark Park, you look at the War Memorial, and how we, in the baseball, everything that's there, and what would be relocated, and how that would happen. We also have to address Helen Hawker. With the expansion of the zoo, a parking lot for Helen Hawker has been greatly diminished. Do we continue with Helen Hawker? Do we look at relocating Helen Hawker? We have to look at the Gage Park amphitheater, and that's woefully in need of some updates and refresh. I think there's just a lot we need to look at with Gage Park, and a lot of these things are near and dear to very people's hearts.
Right.
I mean, if we were to talk about Helen Hawker, Helen Hawker may be the first time that a lot of people are exposed to theater, and they hold it very dearly to their heart, so just the idea of relocating it becomes a very emotional issue.
Absolutely.
In the same way, if you were to talk about the zoo encroaching upon the War Memorial, there's a lot of veterans that have put a lot of their time and energies into improving that memorial, Commissioner Rippon, yourself included, and having that become part of the zoo, I mean, it's, how's that gonna happen? What would happen to it?
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with anything you said, but I don't understand how spending $200,000 for somebody from Chicago or. two hundred thousand dollars for somebody from Chicago or wherever to tell us what we need, when, I mean, clearly, it is sentimental. There's a lot of sentimental features of Gage Park, and, and everyone in Shawnee County is familiar with that park, in and out, you know? So I, I think that, my problem is, you know, what does it get us?
Sure.
To, to do the master plan when, you know, I mean, we're looking at three, four hundred dollars in master plans, we might as well just start a new master planning department in Shawnee County. I mean, it just, I, it, that's, I think my frustration is plan, 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 and we, plans are good, but I sometimes think these consultants that we hire are maybe charging us more than they should.
I, I would add, if I could, that we, we've been working on a master plan in-house, and, and I think we've got a lot of great ideas, and, but I think where we need help is when you start talking about utilities, stormwater runoff, those sorts of things are not our expertise. So I think that'll be a big part of it, and how that, you know, affects all three entities at, at Gage Park, the Discovery Center, the zoo, and Shawnee County, so.
And a lot of it's staff time. We don't have.
Right.
Time and, in some cases, the expertise to, to do a master plan. I agree, they're expensive. But there's a lot of elements to this one, too. And two, they usually guide you through public comment and design surets and anything else that might be involved. And they would do that, whether it was a city-wide master plan or master plan for Gage Park, so. It, it, that's a different animal when you're looking at a whole park system. You tend to get into more of an all-encompassing, you know, recommendations of what your standards are, things like that, where this is more getting into the weeds of where everything's going to be placed, and it's a little different, different animal, master plan for this, this scale. I think we need one because you have the zoo expanding pretty fast.
Yeah.
And like Commissioner Cook mentioned, you have a lot of elements, you know, things like the Mudd Memorial and all that. How is that all going to fit in, or do you move them, or whatever?
Right.
So, and, and two, you have drainage utilities, transportation, you have trail systems, just, there's a lot of moving parts there, so. My only question, I guess on funding it is, would we be ahead to have it funded entirely through the tax and just hang on to this money for other use? I don't know.
We, we could do that. We could absolutely do that, and, and that would be an appropriate use of the funds.
That would maybe be my suggestion.
Well, and in addition to that, the Improvement Authority Board is made up of people who know more about Gage Park than, you know, than, than most of us will ever even come close to. I mean, you've got folks from the zoo, the Discovery Center, from Parks and Rec, Jim Martin.
Yeah.
Who has already done his own master plan.
Yeah, and he's been heavily involved in the one that we were working on.
And, I mean, and then we've got an architect, and I mean, there's, there's a, a wealth of knowledge there that I think probably could put a pretty good idea of what they want together prior to even talking to a consultant. So I, I'm, I think that's a good idea, Commissioner Rippon.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's what these funds are for, for this, it's for improvement of Gage Park, and I consider the master plan part of that, so that would could free up some money that we have.
Right.
That we have tagged for Gage Park right now, or we did years ago, actually, so.
Thoughts, Commissioner Cook?
No, I agree. Those are good points.
So, anyway. I guess that's our recommendation.
Okay, that's enough.
All right.
Thank you.
Received.
Okay, we have one other slide before we get to the capital outlay itself, and that is, we have a couple of projects that are slated to come out of our general funds. The first is the roofs and parking lots transfer that was approved to come out of the general fund, and that is for a separate job ledger that we use to take care of all the various roofs, parking lots, sidewalks, to maintain those through all of the different county buildings. We also had a request from Public Works for a radio replacement for eighty thousand dollars out of the next two years to come out of their Public Works General Fund. The last item that's listed there is one that is listed every year, and that is for the vehicle replacement program at the Appraisers Office. They use the Land Records Fund, which is a fund that specifically has operational and capital outlay items that run through it, that are approved through the, it's managed by the Register of Deeds. So did you have any questions about any of those three projects?
The vehicle replacement program, is that a lease?
It actually is a lease. It's the, it's the only lease that we really usually should have on our CIP, and again, it's because this fund specifically has both operational and capital items that are on it. So they have been approved to have their vehicles leased through this fund.
Kurt, is this radio replacement, this is a, you have radios that are no longer supported by the, are they, that, are they getting old and?
Yeah, the Sheriff's Department tells me I think they're two cycles old. I mean, they're, they're really old, and they're getting to the point where you can't find parts.
Time.
You don't have any questions? That brings us to.
I, I, yeah, a question.
Sorry, go ahead.
The parking lot, that fund. Kurt, do you feel like that's a, a good system? We, we moved money into this fund here, was it a couple of years ago, to create this? Is this working out well, or is it better if we just have it by department for, you know, for funding of these parking lot replacements and whatnot? Or do you like having this fund separate?
Personally, I, I guess I do because it, I know where the money's coming from. They've tasked, you've tasked me with kind of ramrodding these parking lot repairs. It also includes roof replacements, which Nelda takes care of. As far as the program, I think it's been a success in its first year in talking to DOC and the election office. I think they're very pleased with the result. Our parking lot at the South Annex, or at the North Annex, but the South parking lot is almost complete, and it looks great. So I, I think it's been a success, and it's a nice place to put some funds that, that for me, I know where these funds are coming from, and it works great.
Okay.
Quick question. On that same topic. Did we spend all of the five hundred thousand we allocated last year? Or is there any leftover that can carry over to next year?
It has not quite been spent yet, but I know that they are working on getting bids for the roof for this building because we had some leakage problems, and they're needing to go ahead and, and include that in this year's expenditures. So I think we're, we were right under five hundred, and so I, I feel like that it's going to be fully spent this year.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Oh, oh, yeah. And then I had requested funds for one of our district offices, or the roof is leaking, but that's kind of contingent on the cost of this project that Jennifer just talked about.
Okay. Thank you.
Just roofs, or does it include anything like?
Structure?
Structure, doors or anything?
Generally, that, what I've been involved with, it's a membrane. It's just, you place it on the existing roof. It's a very efficient way to keep a roof from leaking. It seems to work very well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sorry, didn't mean to rush you.
Yep.
Okay, and so that brings us to the 2024 capital outlay requests, and we separated those from the other years just so that you can have a better, the screen was just a bit busy in prior years, and so we thought this may be an easier way for us to, to track what you've looked at, what you haven't looked at, and track the amounts for, for what you're hoping to get approved. We have these ranked in the order that you guys scored them during the departmental budget hearings, so the higher ranking projects are listed at the top. They go down to, to the lowest ranking ones. They total, a total amount of requests for this year is three million, seven hundred eighty-one, fifty-six dollars. And I think during the general funds budget hearing, they had requested two and a half million dollars of capital outlay funding this year. So obviously, we have more projects than, than what are, we, we had requested funding for. There is one item on here that I just got an email on Friday stating that they were going to remove it from the capital outlay request, which was the leases for the DA's investigator vehicles. As we talked about during their budget hearing, leases really are not supposed to be funded through the capital outlay fund. The capital outlay fund is for one-time expenditures, and a lease is an operating expenditure, so they are moving that into a request in their departmental operating budget. So I'm going to delete that from this line, which brings us down to three million, five eighty-five.
Was that the one on page two or the one on page one?
That is the one on page two. It's, it's the next to the bottom, the DA investigator vehicles. He had mentioned in his budget hearing that he was trying to get some quotes from Enterprise, and those came through on Friday.
But that means he's increasing his department request.
Correct.
By that one hundred and ninety-six thousand.
For just seventy-seven thousand six. Yes, for seventy-seven thousand sixty dollars is what it would cost for him to lease five Tahos. So we do have two other, and I think Betty had sent an email about that, we do have two other people who have requested leases out of the capital outlay fund, like, and, and that is the Sheriff's Office for a hundred and twenty thousand and the EOC for fifty-five thousand dollars. I believe the, the EOC's request was for a purchase, and they're currently looking to see if they're able to get some pricing on leases to move that out of the capital outlay request also.
Jennifer, I think there may be an update on the Stormont Vale Events Center, number two forty-seven.
Good morning. Commissioner's Callan Saitz, Stormont Vale Events Center, OBG three sixty. You are correct, we are trying to save you money. The sixty thousand dollar allocation for the utility vehicles, we've come up with some creative strategy with John Landon and the Weed Department for that request. They have, they're looking to either potentially replace those units or sell those units off. Those units would not only satisfy our need for the utility vehicles, but go well beyond that. In addition to the units, John is going to be providing a plow tractor front, as well as a sanding basket in the back, which would allow us to plow and clear and salt application for the winter months in areas where Schindel does not contract that service on our sidewalks and some other areas like the Extension Office and so on and so forth. And so I think we can purchase those out of our current capital outlay, our current capital fund that we have. I've asked Matt to both reach out to John and Betty to see, you know, how that process needs to take place, but that would save us a considerable amount of budget, as well as, again, pull that sixty thousand dollars off the request for 2024.
Great.
So I will remove that.
Commissioner Rippon?
What's this?
Yes. So I, I guess I have a question for Jim. Since this is our first year doing this in a work session and not a meeting, what can we actually do?
What you can actually do is make these changes and do these things, and then as part of the final budget process, you'll be approving these amounts, and I'm looking at Betty, this is what we've been talking about over time. You're making preliminary decisions right now, talking to, with staff, it's all in a public meeting, nothing is being hidden, it's all transparent, but it's still subject to your final budgetary decisions that'll be made in an open public action meeting on Thursdays. Does that answer your question?
But we can't vote on anything, right?
You can vote on things right now and vote to narrow down, absolutely, but it's still subject to any commissioner bringing back an item during the normal action budget process that will occur in the future.
Okay, so they're just not final decisions?
They are not final decisions today. This is a work session, we're working through them. You're, you're still allowed to change your mind until you come up with the final budget.
Okay, thank you.
And I did change the title, just based on the fact that this isn't a meeting to propose, so you're not, I'm not putting it under a column that says approved. So I guess my question would be, do you want me to start from the top and go down, or would you guys like to discuss specific ones?
Well, Jennifer, do you want to touch on the priority score, and just for those that are watching and present in the room?
Absolutely. So during each budget hearing, we provide a list of the, each department's capital improvement projects. Each commissioner is asked to score each project from one through five, one being their highest preference and five being their lowest preference. We then take those scores and average them out to get an average priority score for each department, so that the commissioners can kind of know how they, as a group, feel these projects are rated.
And initially, our preliminary budget for capital outlays, two point five million dollars?
That is correct. So we are currently looking at being one million, twenty-five thousand, fifty-six dollars above that.
Jennifer, some of these requested capital outlays, they don't have a number attached.
That is because their funding is like on about the sixth line down, the Sheriff's Motorola.
Oh, I see.
They're over here on the federal grant section. Because they're, they actually indicated that they have a federal grant that would be paying for those instead of requesting them to come out of the capital outlay fund.
Can we talk about the Emergency Management, number two sixty-five, the AMR console replacement? I don't know if that's something that Nelson might be able to discuss. That's a four hundred and ten thousand dollar request. As I understand, when we did our last contract, we embedded AMR into the Sheriff's Office at the Law Enforcement Center.
Nelson Castile, land and business compliance, yes, we did, on the current contract that's in effect, two thousand seven dash twenty sixteen, we placed, we pay AMR fifty thousand dollars a year to put two dispatchers in the nine-in-one center, and then this year, as a part of the new contract that I haven't memorized the number on, we provide an extra thirty thousand dollars to put a third dispatcher in there.
Okay, and it's four hundred and ten thousand dollars, specifically, that's for the console that the dispatchers are working off of?
That would be the console and also doing some renovations in there to move consoles so they have more space in the center to add more consoles. I believe there's twelve consoles in there right now, and I believe they're all filled right now.
Because the sheriff has also requested five hundred thousand for dispatch console upgrades.
And that would be their portion of it. Ours would be the AMR side. The sheriff's side will probably take very little renovation. The AMR side of the room will take some renovations to be done to, to squeeze four new consoles in there. The AMR side of the room will take some renovations to be done to squeeze four new consoles in there.
I know that the embedding the dispatchers and AMR in the same room was an idea that was really kind of promoted or pushed by the commissioners at that time. There's been some hesitation on the part of the both dispatch and AMR, whether that was good or bad. And I know we've got under sheriff here. Do we need to have AMR embedded into dispatch? Or should we walk away from that and have AMR embedded in their own operations?
The interoperability and communication between those two sides of the room out now is just fantastic. They've had some significant crimes that have happened lately and also some larger incidents. And having those folks being able to be right there with each other, they've still got to go through certain radio and computer and telephone interfaces so that it is recorded and documented. But having them in there has just really been a really good deal to in to getting that information across. We've used the radio system to patch so that we can get some of the first responders now talking more to AMR. And it also serves to take some work off of the county dispatchers when AMR is able to perform that or when you're able to just communicate briefly informally and then formally communicate back out, so it's documented.
Is this a project that needs to be done all in one year as one project? Or is it something that can be phased in? And I'm looking at the under sheriff as well.
Shane Hubler, Shawna County Sheriff's Office. Are you asking if the AMR project and the sheriff's office project need to be completed at the same time?
I mean, I think that they, I mean, you're both doing very, both sides of the coin, so to speak. And does it need to be done at the same time? And does it need to be done all in one year? Is it something that can be spread out over a course of two years or three years?
I think it would be advantageous, in my opinion, if it was done all at the same time. You're interrupting those operations. They are on the same floor. If if you spread that out over years, then it would be a constant state of confusion, for lack of a better term. But if we could get that completed all at once, the workstations, the consoles for AMR and the consoles for the sheriff's office could all be done at the same time. It would have to be done in stages, but I don't think spreading it out over years would would be advantageous to proper safety communications.
Betty, how much money do we have, if any, left over from ARPA? Is there any residual?
That's that's hard to answer because there are some projects that were approved by the Spark Committee that have not been approved by the BCC yet. So that's kind of a, it's a hard question to answer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So I guess I'll kick it off by saying that I think we need to go ahead and approve the small capital outlay projects, $500,000.
Second.
Or $100,000, I guess, sorry. $100,000 for this year.
Yep.
Okay. Motion. Motion's been made by Commissioner May, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries three zero, so.
I'll go ahead and also make a motion that we do the DOC security system upgrade.
Second. Motion's been made by Commissioner May, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Court Data Center, what what is that? What does that look like? Is there anyone here from the courts?
No, Lee Dawn was not able to be here today. She said she would be here on Thursday if you had questions.
Okay.
Backup generator. That's what that's for.
I would move for approval of the three items from Public Works. The total is $300,000.
Public Works, that has to be the dump trucks, tobacco, and the mowers?
Correct.
Okay, I would second that. Motion's been made by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Let me get those.
So the the Court Data Center, my understanding was that was to piggyback off of IT's generator to get a bigger generator? Or is that, it was their portion of the cost, or?
Mark Price, Information Technology. That is for a whole new generator. When we, after last year, we went and evaluated the existing generator that court or the county has that is supplying the county IT data data center. At that time, we did find it is pretty much at capacity. So to give courts any new, any generator backup, we would have to actually add a secondary generator. I don't have any money set aside. I think this would be for a whole new generator. I I do not know and cannot speak to where the pricing came from, what that will all cover. In discussions with Lee Dawn in courts, it was, the thought was go ahead and get a newer generator in that would carry the load for both data centers. The one that county IT has was put in probably about 15 years ago. While the generator lifecycle is much more than 15 years, if we're doing it rather than doing two small generators, my recommendation to them was get one that would handle both centers. It would also give us the ability to kind of have a backup, backup to the backup. While it doesn't happen very often, probably about four years ago, the North Annex lost power. We do have a backup generator out there due to one of the regular maintenance cycles. We had a line fail, an oil line. We ended up having to shut the generator down in a situation like that. If that were to happen at the courthouse where the generator were to have just a line rupture, a line fail fail, we would end up going down, which would affect the county as a whole. So that was my thought of adding redundant generators. So in a, you know, event like we had this week weekend where you had people out for 48 hours, if we were to be affected that way, we would, hopefully, one of the generators would be working, and we would be able to maintain services.
So this is, just to summarize, my understanding is this is a generator that is capable of powering all of the courthouse is what they're wanting to buy?
It would not be powering all the courthouse, it would be powering the data centers.
Okay.
So with server equipment, you really don't want that going up and down. And the the thought would, or the the thought is, in an emergency, it's not to keep courts functioning, it's not to keep, it's not to keep the day-to-day operations functioning, it's to keep the backend server and data equipment up and running so it is not going up and down and trying to be maintained while power's fluctuating.
Okay, and Nelda, do we have one that powers the courthouse now? Or, I mean, how many generators are we going to have on the roof of the courthouse?
Nelda, Handing Director of Facilities, yes. We do have a generator that keeps the bare necessities of the courthouse running, mainly the equipment to keep them stabilized. As Mark said, it's hard on the equipment when we have fluctuations in power. The, that generator is actually in the basement. It is separate from the IT generator, which is on the roof. Our generator runs off of diesel, and the IT generator runs off of natural gas.
Okay.
What's the condition of the generator in the basement?
The generator currently is in working condition. It exercises every week. We have not had any failures with it, and I don't see any. We have tested, to Mark, we did test whether the generator in the basement could take on additional capacity. And it cannot take on the capacity demand that IT would need to put on it. So we did check into that.
So out of curiosity, Mark, if if we were to approve this and they buy this bigger, newer generator, are there other buildings that we could, is it even possible to move the old generator to a different building to take care of the IT at those? Like, let's say this building, for instance, if we moved it across the street?
I think anything's possible. I mean, it would definitely be possible to move and use, utilize somewhere else. With all of our equipment currently in the courthouse, or most of our equipment in the courthouse, including 911 service, or not 911 services, but the dispatch software, the software the jail uses, my my kind of hope was to keep that generator as a secondary backup to a backup generator. We've never had to get to that situation, but, you know, like I say, there are chances for the generator to fail, or one of the generators to fail, or a transfer switch to fail. And that was kind of my thought was maintaining it as a kind of N plus one backup if if we needed to. But we, if if the pleasure of the commission was to try to back up another building, we could definitely get it moved.
Well, I, I mean, I don't, I'm just kind of, I guess, spitballing right now. But, I mean, we've got the election office, the LEC. I mean, there's, there's important data out there. And I assume that they've already got backup for a good portion of what they do. But, I mean, where where's the redundancy most important? I guess it's something that maybe we need to think about and just, you know, I don't know, look at it and get back with us, I guess, or?
Yeah, and and just the, both the LEC and the elections office do currently have generators. And we can definitely evaluate where we stand with that. If there is someplace that we could better serve with if we were to get a new generator, we can definitely look into that.
Okay.
Thanks.
I noticed we have a couple, a couple line items that are paid for by the federal grants. It looks entirely paid for.
Yes, there are four items at the sheriff's office submitted this year that they are requesting federal grants for. They are the three that are listed at the top, the backhaul, the Motorola backhaul switches, the fiber backhaul switches is what I think the others are, Axon camera replacements, and also down towards the bottom, the LPR intersection cameras.
But they've not been notified whether they've been approved or not, is my understanding.
Two of them are totally covered by grants, it looks like.
The only one that the funding has been secured for is the Axon. The other two are still, the rest of them are in, either in application process or waiting for approval at this time.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the Axon.
Yes, I'll second. Motion's been made by Commissioner May, seconded by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Can we approve the other one that's funded by by grants pending it? Whether we get the grant or not? I guess that's.
Well, I I would be hesitant to do that because if you're approving it and the grant don't, doesn't come through, I mean, have you committed yourself to that expenditure?
I'll just say pending.
No, you have not committed yourself. This is just funding.
Yeah, all of, all of these projects, all you're approving is the funding for them. The projects themselves will all come back to you for approval on the project themselves because they have to get the purchase authority approved by the commission at a later time. I did just want to point out to you, because I know you need to leave at 10:15, that it's 10:04.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Under Sheriff Hubler, the, I want to go back again to the dispatch console upgrade and the AMR console. Again, I look at those as being two projects that would go together hand in hand. You would want to do them all at the same time to minimize the disruption to dispatch and AMR. Is that something that we are going to be able to get all of the equipment for? And again, looking at supply line and technology, is that something that we want to do this year? Or is it better to wait for a year? Can we wait for a year? Is this a critical junction for the equipment?
Respectfully, that's kind of a loaded question. The equipment is in a place right now where the parts are to repair if we were to have a a console fail right now. We are robbing from old pieces, trying to find other agencies that have downed this type of console to get those repairs done. With all the vendors that we've spoken with, they could supply if we were to do that upgrade in 2024. We we would be able to get that accomplished in 2024. Can we continue to try and nurse it along? Absolutely, we're going to do whatever we can to keep the the center functional. A lot of the consoles now don't operate at full capabilities. A lot of these consoles raise up and down depending on what dispatcher's there, what equipment is there. There's a lot of different functionality. Some of those consoles that we're currently using right now don't, aren't able to optimize that functionality.
While it received a lower score, I I look at that as being very critical to the operations of the county, whether it is fire, ambulance, law enforcement. And so without the dispatch, how are you going to know where to go or what's, what, even get a call in?
Correct. Was there a question there for me? I'm sorry.
No, it just, it just seems, again, that these would be more critical. And if we were to put those two projects together, is there any benefit? I mean, you've got $500,000 for your project. Emergency Management's listed for 10 for AMR's dispatch. If we put those two together, is there any savings by doing it all at once?
I think we could get with the vendors that, and see if doing one full collective project, and I would guess there would be some savings realized. If that's the direction we'd like to go, I'm sure Director Rabin and Nelson could work together very well and maybe bring that cost down. I just don't know how much money we'd be talking about for a savings piece.
If you guys could meet with the vendor and maybe bring that back to us for consideration?
I think we can get that done.
All right. Commissioner, knowing that your time is running short, do we want to maybe look at the discussion of the new debt and then the capital outlay?
Future years?
Future years.
Yes. So our last tab here shows all the capital outlay, new debt, and grants that are slated for the years 2025 through 2028. We have, sorry, 6.8 million requested in 2025 of capital outlay funding, 7.3 million in 2026, 2.7 in 2027, and 2.8 in 2028. In addition to that, for new debt, there is a request of 9.3 million funded by new debt in 2025 and almost 35 million in 2026. And then the sheriff's, one of their grants is slated to hopefully fund a project for $473,000 each of those years. And there are, it looks like about little under 60 projects overall that are in future years. years. Were there any particular projects you wanted more information off of that tab?
Not right now, from what I can think of.
Just a summary of where you are right now. It looks like $470,000 of, is proposed to be approved out of the 2024 funding, which leaves right at $2 million left to be allocated.
Okay. All right, well, I've got to go, so.
Do you want to adjourn?
We're going to adjourn.